Thank you for all being here tonight at City Council on June the twentieth. Um, I'd like for Ms. Brittany to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Francis.
Here.
Councilmember Smiley.
Here.
Councilmember Marsh.
Here.
Councilmember Crabtree.
Here.
Councilmember Craig.
Here.
Councilmember Martin.
Here.
Councilmember Wilcox.
Here.
Councilmember Meek.
Here.
Councilmember Limeburger.
Here.
Councilmember Keel.
Here.
Councilmember Bell.
Here.
Councilmember Handy.
Present.
And we have a quorum.
I know. All right, I need to call on Ward one, Ms. Natasha for invocation.
Thank you, Mayor. Let us pray. Our Father, who art in heaven, we come to you as humble servants to do your will. Please keep your arms around us, Lord. Guide us as we show love, compassion, empathy to our community. Prayers for our community as we live a day-to-day lives and walk through this journey we call life. We need you more than ever, Lord. We love you and we praise you. In all this, we pray, in the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen. We stand for the pledge, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I got it all back. I called an order and I need to call the roll. I messed up. I'm sorry. Messed up on your night up here, but alrighty, uh, awards and recognitions on item five, uh, we do not have any on that tonight. Public comments? Anyone out there would like to have public comments this evening? Babe Toby. Seeing none on public comments, we'll move into Mayor's comments. I'll try to keep them brief. Uh, had a good time at squeaming on the square. Had a lot of barbecue. Eat too much. I enjoyed myself and I think all the city did. Sounds at six was great. Uh, like to thank all them down at CDS and all they did and Toby and his indirect department taking care of all they done for us. Uh, I'd like to also remind people that me and Troy and Sarah Whitaker are working on the Small Business Commission. We're getting that together. Trying to move forward on that and, um, the Legislative Town Hall on Friday, this Friday. Uh, I believe everyone to be here about nine thirty, ten o'clock. Is that correct, Troy? Okay, I got him off guard, y'all. Um, all right, um, I'd really want to send our prayers out to Ms. Donna Sanders. She is one of the original four ladies or employees, the lady that worked for us at the Sportsplex. She's having a lot of health issues. I'd like for us to remember her in our prayers if we could. Um, also like to give a shout out to the Police Department and Fire Department for all their hard work they've been doing and staying real busy. I'll give a shout out to Dave Herndon and his crew. They're struggling through without Mike, but I know they're working hard over there because I've been on the phone with them and back and forth and I appreciate everything they're doing for us on that. Um, I'm asking all the city businesses, why I got my moment to speak here, about no trespassing, no loitering signs. We're having an abundance of squatters at businesses up and down the neighborhoods and down the Boulevard and everywhere. Would you sign up? Because you'll start seeing them all over the city properties coming up. No loitering, no trespassing. Because we are trying to move this forward. We are not trying to turn our city into a tent city. When you drive up and down the Boulevard, you drive up and down Main Street, Virginia Street. I understand we fall on hard times, but I do not want to look like California, San Diego. And I hope nobody takes that wrong, but we are, every area you look, we're having more and more of this. So you will see more and more no trespassing and no loitering signs on the city parks, on the city buildings. Everywhere the city property owns, you will see that. Okay? And another issue that's been wearing my phone out for the last couple of days is fireworks. We do have a city ordinance against fireworks. Please do not shoot the fireworks off till July fourth. You are really upsetting the four-legged creatures, the dogs, the cats, and the pet owners themselves. They are upset because the animals are upset. So please, let's remember about the fireworks ordinances because the Police Department and Fire Department don't need to be aggravated over this. It is a city ordinance. Let's please shoot them on our regular time, July fourth. Alrighty, we're moving right along. Alrighty, uh, reports from officers, committees, and guest speakers, monthly financial from Ms. Melissa Clayton. Please come on down.
Hi, it's my pleasure to bring you May's monthly financial report. Um, we did not have any interfund transfers during the month of May, so the interfund balance remains at six thousand four hundred and fifty-three dollars. Payroll tax revenue.
There it is.
Thank you.
Okay, are y'all with me? Alright, payroll tax revenue for the month of May, for eleven months, so far we've collected eighteen million, one hundred ninety thousand dollars. Um, we had budgeted sixteen million, six sixty-eight, so payroll taxes are still coming in strong. Um, May was not as strong as April, but it was still, um, at budget, so. Property taxes for the month of May, um, yearly total is five million, two oh six, two sixty, and we had only budgeted four million, nine eighty-nine, so property taxes is also in over budget. Our business license revenue for the year is at two million, five fourteen, seven ninety-five. Um, we have collected the majority of the businesses that file on a calendar year end. Um, a lot of them filed extensions and stuff like that, but we did get most of the collections. We are in the process of sending out um, second notices on those, so a lot of businesses will be notified if they haven't paid, um, now. Alright, for the general fund, the fund, um, is doing well. We started the year with a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars worth of incomparances. So far this year, we've collected revenue of forty-four million, seven fifty-nine, four forty-seven, and our expenses are thirty-nine million, eight oh one, seven seventy-five. So overall, we have revenue over expenses at the bottom of five million, thirty-three thousand, four hundred and seventy-eight dollars, and that includes our capital transfers. Are included in that expense number. Our municipal road aid fund began the year with three hundred and fifty-eight thousand, one hundred and seventy-seven dollars worth of incomparances. We have collected six hundred and twenty-seven thousand, uh, three hundred and ninety-seven dollars in our municipal road aid fund, and we have spent um, six hundred and fourteen thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars on our road aids, so we have, um, revenue over expenses of three seventy and then minus our incomparances. We still have a positive balance in our MRA fund of two seventy-three, nine oh five. And then our capital fund, we began the year with two million, twenty-six thousand, one hundred and eighty-four dollars worth of incomparances. We've only transferred to one million, six ninety-three, eight twenty-eight. We have the fourth quarter transfer to do in the month of June. Our actual expenses are three, three million, three forty-five, seven eighty-six. So we do have a positive in our capital fund, revenue over expenses of three seventy-four, two twenty-six. And then we have incomparances or commitments to spend of three thirty-six, three seventy, but we still have a positive balance in capital, so it's thirty-seven thousand, eight fifty-six. As far as our departmental expenses go, um, we are supposed to be at ninety-one point six seven percent through eleven months, and so most of our departments are, are under budget. Um, the ones that are not, we will be taking care of in the, in the capital and operational budget amendments we're gonna do the second reading on tonight, so. Um, Admin's at eighty-nine point five, taxes at eighty-eight point two, information technology's at eighty-eight point three, legislative is currently over budget. Police is at eighty-eight percent, ECC's at eighty-six point eight, fire department's at ninety-two. EMS is also currently over budget due to the unscheduled overtime. Uh, we will take care of that in the budget amendment. And then Public Works Admin's at ninety percent, City Maintenance is at eighty-two point eight, Fort Campbell Contracts is at seventy-nine. Service Center's at eighty-six point five, Parks and Rec is at eighty-nine point one, Sportsplex is at eighty-six point six, and the Water Park is at forty-two point five percent. Overall, our general fund is running at ninety-one point four percent, so just slightly under budget for expenses. Our MRA is only at fifty-seven point eight percent, and the capital fund is at ninety-two point three percent. So we, um, have gotten most of the vehicles and everything that was budgeted this year. They've all been coming in, and so that's why capital, we've spent all of the capital funds for this year, pretty much. So our general fund cash balance, um, we ended the month of May with available cash of sixteen million, eight fifty-seven, seven seventy-three. Our available cash in April was sixteen million, seven thirty-two, so we did have a positive month of revenue over expenses in the month of May. Um, and that brings our available cash at sixteen, eight fifty-seven, minus our reserve accounts, gives us an unassigned cash balance of fourteen million, seven eighty-four, three oh one, which that percentage of unassigned cash is forty-two point one percent. And that concludes my monthly financial report. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Any questions for Melissa?
Alright, thank you, guys.
Thank you, ma'am. Alrighty, I move to item nine, approval amendments for June sixth, twenty twenty-three. That'll be it. Alrighty, we got.
Second.
Natasha, we got Mr. Marsh. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, thank you. Moving right along. Now for the fun part, ordinance is number ten. Ordinance thirteen dash twenty twenty-three, operational budget.
Amending the City of Hopkinsville, Kentucky annual budget for fiscal year July one, twenty twenty-two through June thirty, twenty twenty-three by estimating revenues and resources and appropriating funds for the operation of city government. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Hopkinsville, Kentucky as follows. By summary, section one of ordinance oh five, twenty twenty-three, adopting the annual budget for fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty-two and ending June thirty, twenty twenty-three as amended as follows. Revenues, general fund, forty-five million, eight hundred and twenty-five thousand, five hundred and twenty-six. Municipal road aid fund, six hundred and sixty thousand. Prior year revenue, six hundred and thirty thousand, four hundred and seventy-one. Total revenues, forty-seven million, one hundred and fifteen thousand, nine hundred and ninety-seven. Expenses, general fund, forty-six million, four hundred and fifty-five thousand, nine hundred and ninety-seven. Municipal road aid fund, six hundred and sixty thousand. Total expenses, forty-seven million, one hundred and fifteen thousand, nine hundred and ninety-seven. The full text of this ordinance is on file in the office of the undersigned City Clerk of the City of Hopkinsville at seven fifteen South Virginia Street, Hopkinsville, Kentucky, where it is available for public inspection between the hours of eight o'clock a.m. to four thirty p.m., Monday through Friday.
So moved.
Second.
We're on Ms. Bruce and then, uh, Steve. Alrighty, um, any discussion? We'll get better hearing next week. Any discussion? Alrighty, uh, we'll call the roll, please.
Councilmember Martin.
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcox.
Yes.
Councilmember Meek.
Yes.
Councilmember Limeburger.
Yes.
Councilmember Keel.
Yes.
Councilmember Bell.
Yes.
Councilmember Handy.
Yes.
Councilmember Francis.
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Marsh.
Yes.
Councilmember Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilmember Craig.
Yes.
And that passes unanimously on second reading.
Okay, item B, ordinance fourteen dash twenty twenty-three, capital bud, capital budget amendment.
Amending the City of Hopkinsville, Kentucky annual capital equipment and property replacement budget for fiscal year July one, twenty twenty-two through June thirty, twenty twenty-three by estimating revenues and resources and appropriating funds. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Hopkinsville, Kentucky as follows. At section one of ordinance oh eight, twenty twenty-three, amending the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three capital equipment and property replacement budget is amended as follows. Revenues, transfer from general fund, one million, eight hundred and forty-two thousand, one hundred and forty-two dollars. Transfer from general fund wins additional insurance premium, one hundred and sixty-eight thousand, one hundred dollars. Transfer from general fund, Police Department, one hundred and seventy thousand, sixty-eight dollars. Prior year revenue, ninety-five thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two dollars. Total capital revenues, two million, two hundred and seventy-six thousand, thirty-two dollars. Expenses, information technology, one hundred thousand. Police Department, five hundred thousand, sixty-eight. Fire Department, two hundred and ninety-two thousand. City Maintenance, two hundred and forty-nine thousand, eight hundred and twenty-six. Service Center, one hundred and twenty-seven thousand. Parks and Recreation, one hundred and forty-five thousand. Sportsplex, sixty-five thousand. Agencies, fifty thousand. Buildings and Properties, seven hundred and forty-seven thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight. Total capital expenses, two million, two hundred and seventy-six thousand, thirty-two dollars.
So be it.
Second.
Natasha, Jamie, any discussion? Call the roll, Ms. Brittany.
Councilmember Martin.
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcox.
Yes.
Councilmember Meek.
Yes.
Councilmember Limeburger.
Yes.
Councilmember Keel.
Yes.
Councilmember Bell.
Yes.
Councilmember Handy.
Yes.
Councilmember Francis.
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Marsh.
Yes.
Councilmember Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilmember Craig.
Yes.
And that passes unanimously on the second reading.
Thank you. Item C, ordinance fifteen dash twenty twenty-three, operational budget, second reading.
Adopting the City of Hopkinsville, Kentucky annual budget for fiscal year July one, twenty twenty-three through June thirty, twenty twenty-four by estimating revenues and resources and appropriating funds for the operation of city government. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Hopkinsville, Kentucky as follows. By summary, the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget of the City of Hopkinsville is hereby adopted as follows. Revenues, general fund, forty-seven million, two hundred and seventy thousand, three hundred and thirty-two. Municipal road aid, six hundred and eighty-three thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two. Prior year, one hundred and seventy-three thousand, nine hundred and nine. Total revenues, forty-eight million, one hundred and twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred and sixty-three. Expenses, general fund, forty-seven million, three, four hundred and thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and sixty-nine. Municipal road aid fund, six hundred and eighty-three thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two. Total expenses, forty-eight billion, one hundred and twenty-one thousand, nine hundred and ninety-one. Surplus, five, five thousand, nine hundred and seventy-two dollars. Adopt, section two, adopts a classification and compensation plan pursuant to chapter thirty of the Hopkinsville Code of Ordinances. Sets authorization to enter into contracts or agreements within budgeted allocations. The full text of this ordinance is on file in the office of the undersigned City Clerk of the City of Hopkinsville at seven fifteen South Virginia Street, Hopkinsville, Kentucky, where it is available for public inspection between the hours of eight o'clock a.m. to four thirty p.m., Monday through Friday.
So be it. Second.
I've got Natasha and Bruce. Any discussion? If you call the roll, please.
Councilmember Martin.
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcox.
Yes.
Councilmember Meek.
Yes.
Councilmember Limeburger.
Yes.
Councilmember Keel.
Yes.
Councilmember Bell.
Yes.
Councilmember Handy.
Yes.
Councilmember Francis.
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Marsh.
Yes.
Councilmember Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilmember Craig.
Yes.
And that passes unanimously on second reading.
Alrighty, uh, ordinance D sixteen dash twenty twenty-three, capital budget, second reading.
Adopting the City of Hopkinsville, Kentucky annual capital equipment and property replacement budget for fiscal year July one, twenty twenty-three through June thirty, twenty twenty-four by estimating revenues and resources and appropriating funds. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Hopkinsville, Kentucky as follows. The fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four capital equipment and property replacement budget of the City of Hopkinsville is hereby adopted as follows. Revenues, transfer from general fund, one million, seven hundred and ninety thousand, ninety-nine dollars. Transfer from general fund wins additional insurance premium, one hundred and thirty-two thousand, six hundred and eighty-five thousand. One hundred and thirty-two thousand, six hundred and eighty-five, sorry. Transfer from general fund, Police Department, one hundred and seventy-three thousand, nine hundred and nine. Total capital revenues, two million, ninety-six thousand, six hundred and ninety-three. Expenses, administration, seventy thousand. Information technology, seventy thousand. Police, four hundred and seventy-three thousand, nine hundred and nine. Fire, three hundred and twenty thousand. City Maintenance, four hundred and seventy thousand. Parks and Recreation, one hundred and forty thousand. Buildings and Properties, five hundred and fifty thousand. Total capital expenses, two million, ninety-three thousand, nine hundred and nine dollars. Surplus, two thousand, seven hundred and eighty-four dollars. The mayor is hereby authorized to enter into any contracts or agreements necessary to acquire capital equipment or services within the allocations listed in this ordinance.
So be it.
Second.
Natasha and Jamie, any discussion?
Go, go ahead and read the rest.
If any section, subsection, sentence, clause, or phrase of this ordinance is for any reason held unconstitutional or otherwise invalid, such infirmity shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions of this ordinance. And in all existing ordinances inconsistent with this ordinance are hereby repealed, and this ordinance shall take effect July one, twenty twenty-three after its passage and publication according to law.
Okay, do it again.
Yep.
So be it.
Second.
Natasha and Ms. Jamie. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Martin.
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcox.
Yes.
Councilmember Meek.
Yes.
Councilmember Limeburger.
Yes.
Councilmember Keel.
Yes.
Councilmember Bell.
Yes.
Councilmember Handy.
Yes.
Councilmember Francis.
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Marsh.
Yes.
Councilmember Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilmember Craig.
Yes.
And that passes unanimously on second reading.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, ordinance E seventeen dash twenty twenty-three, classification plan amendment.
An ordinance amending certain sections of chapter thirty Employee Class, Employee Classification and Compensation Plan of the Hopkinsville Code of Ordinances. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Hopkinsville, Kentucky as follows. Section thirty point two twenty of the Hopkinsville Code of Ordinances is hereby amended as follows. Thirty point twenty, City Council to provide pay steps within pay grades. It shall be the sole responsibility of City Council to provide pay steps within the pay grade sufficient to provide for continued recruitment and retention of qualified personnel to carry out the goals and objectives established by the mayor, city council, and local, state, and federal laws. This will be approved by City Council as outlined in thirty point one seven herein. Section two, section thirty point twenty-two of the Hopkinsville Code of Ordinances is hereby amended as follows. Thirty point twenty-two, shift differential pay. City Council hereby establishes shift differential pay for sworn employees of the Police Department, Emergency Communications Center dispatchers, and Public Works employees assigned to work during scheduled second and third shifts. Differential pay shall be as follows. Second shift, three hundred and three fif, three dollars and fifty cents per hour. Third shift, four dollars per hour. Section three, section thirty point oh two B two of the Hopkinsville Code of Ordinances is hereby amended as follows. City Administrator, compensation for the city administrator is established and fixed at the sum established by City Council through the annual budget. Powers and duties are set forth in KRS eighty-three A point oh nine oh and the employee job description. If any section, subsection, sentence, clause, or phrase of this ordinance is held unconstitutional or otherwise invalid, such infirmity shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions of this ordinance. All ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed. This ordinance shall take effect after its passage and publication according to law.
So moved.
Amy.
Second.
Second.
Natasha. Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Martin.
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcox.
Yes.
Councilmember Meek.
Yes.
Councilmember Limeburger.
Yes.
Councilmember Keel.
Yes.
Councilmember Bell.
Yes.
Councilmember Handy.
Yes.
Councilmember Francis.
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Marsh.
Yes.
Councilmember Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilmember Craig.
Yes.
And that passes unanimously on second reading.
Thank you. Uh, ordinance eighteen dash twenty twenty-three, Central Avenue, always stops?
Establish always stops on Central Avenue. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Hopkinsville, Kentucky as follows. Section one, pursuant to KRS one eighty-nine point three three seven and section seventy point oh three A of the Hopkinsville Code of Ordinances, Hopkinsville City Council hereby authorizes the installation of stop signs on Central Avenue at its intersections with Broad Street, College Street, and Jones Street. If any section, subsection, sentence, clause, or phrase of this ordinance is held unconstitutional or otherwise invalid, such infirmity shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions of this ordinance. All ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed, and this ordinance shall take effect after its passage and publication according to law and upon posting of the appropriate signage by the Public Works Department.
So moved.
Jamie.
Second.
Steve, any discussion? Seeing none, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Martin.
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcox.
Yes.
Councilmember Meek.
Yes.
Councilmember Limeburger.
Yes.
Councilmember Keel.
Yes.
Councilmember Bell.
Yes.
Councilmember Handy.
Yes.
Councilmember Francis.
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Marsh.
Yes.
Councilmember Crabtree.
Yes.
And Councilmember Craig.
Yes.
And that passes unanimously on second reading as well.
Okay, ordinance nineteen dash twenty twenty-three, East Ninth Street Corridor rezoning, second reading.
Amending the zoning maps of the City of Hopkinsville, Kentucky, East Ninth Street Corridor. Whereas Community and Development Services made favorable recommendation at their April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three meeting for City Council to approve rezoning application R two three four one. And whereas, City Council concurs said recommendation is in agreement with the Hopkinsville Christian County Comprehensive Plan, the existing classification is inappropriate and significant physical, social, and economic changes have occurred warranting the rezoning. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Hopkinsville, Kentucky as follows. Pursuant to KRS one hundred point two eleven Hopkinsville Code of Ordinances and Community and Development Services recommendation dated April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three, the following properties as further described on exhibit A attached hereto and incorporated herein are hereby rezoned from I one Light Industrial District to B three Central Business District. A one point five nine acre lot located on East Ninth Street, parking lot on the northeastern corner of East Ninth Street and Cloud, South Clay Streets, four oh one and four oh five East Ninth Street, four oh nine East Ninth Street, four twenty-five East Ninth Street, four sixteen East Ninth Street, four eighteen East Ninth Street, four twenty East Ninth Street, nine twelve South Clay Street, five hundred East Ninth Street, eight oh three South Campbell Street, eight oh seven South Campbell Street, five fourteen East Ninth Street, and five oh five East Ninth Street. If any section, subsection, sentence, clause, or phrase of this ordinance is held unconstitutional or otherwise invalid, such infirmity shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions of this ordinance. All ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed, and this ordinance shall take effect after its passage and publication according to law.
So moved.
Second.
Got Matthew and Jamie. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's call the roll.
Councilmember Martin.
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcox.
Yes.
Councilmember Meek.
Yes.
Councilmember Limeburger.
Yes.
Councilmember Keel.
Yes.
Councilmember Bell.
Yes.
Councilmember Handy.
Yes.
Councilmember Francis.
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Marsh.
Yes.
Councilmember Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilmember Craig.
Yes.
And that passes unanimously on second reading.
Okay, ordinance twenty dash twenty twenty-three, Peachtree subdivision zoning, first reading.
Amending the zoning maps of the City of Hopkinsville, Kentucky, properties located in Peachtree Place subdivision and on Powell Lane. Whereas Community and Development Services initiated a zoning map amendment by resolution twenty twenty-three oh two to assign the original zoning designation of R two Single Family Residential District to properties located in Peachtree Place subdivision and on Powell Lane. And whereas, Community and Development Services made favorable recommendation at their May twenty-second, twenty twenty-three meeting for City Council to approve original zoning application R two three five one. And whereas, City Council concurs said recommendation is in agreement with the Hopkinsville Christian County Comprehensive Plan and significant physical, social, and economic changes have occurred warranting the zoning of the properties. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Hopkinsville, Kentucky as follows. Pursuant to KRS one hundred point two eleven Hopkinsville Code of Ordinances, Community and Development Services Resolution twenty twenty-three oh two and recommendation, recommendation dated May twenty-second, twenty twenty-three, the following properties as further described on exhibit A attached hereto and incorporated herein are hereby zoned R two Single Family Residential District. the following properties as further described on exhibit A attached here to and incorporated herein are hereby zoned R two Single Family Residential District. Twelve oh two Melrose Court, twelve oh three Melrose Court, twelve oh four Melrose Court, twelve oh five Melrose Court, lot twenty-six Peachtree Place, eleven oh one Peachtree Place, eleven oh two Peachtree Place, eleven oh three Peachtree Place, eleven oh four Peachtree Place, eleven oh five Peachtree Place, eleven oh six Peachtree Place, eleven oh seven Peachtree Place, eleven oh eight Peachtree Place, eleven ten Peachtree Place, eleven twelve Peachtree Place, ten forty-seven Powell Lane, ten fifty-one Powell Lane, ten fifty-five Powell Lane, ten fifty-nine Powell Lane, thirteen oh two Savannah Place, thirteen oh three Savannah Place, thirteen oh four Savannah Place, thirteen oh five Savannah Place, thirteen oh six Savannah Place. If any section, subsection, sentence, clause, or phrase of this ordinance is held unconstitutional or otherwise invalid, such infirmity shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions of this ordinance. All ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed, and this ordinance shall take effect after its passage and publication according to law.
So moved.
Second.
Amy and Travis. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's call the roll, please, ma'am.
Councilmember Martin.
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcox.
Yes.
Councilmember Meek.
Yes.
Councilmember Lumberger.
Yes.
Councilmember Keel.
Yes.
Councilmember Bell.
Yes.
Councilmember Handy.
Yes.
Councilmember Francis.
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Marsh.
Yes.
Councilmember Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilmember Craig.
Yes.
And that passes unanimously on first reading.
Thank you, ma'am. Ordinance twenty-one, twenty twenty-three, Old Concord Lane rezoning.
Amending the zoning maps of the city of Hopkinsville, Kentucky, twenty-five point five seven acres of property located on Old Concord Lane. Whereas, Community and Development Services made favorable recommendation at their May twenty-second, twenty twenty-three meeting for city council to approve rezoning application R two three five two. And whereas, city council concurs said recommendation is in agreement with the Hopkinsville Christian County Comprehensive Plan, the existing classification is inappropriate and significant physical, social, and economic changes have occurred warranting the rezoning. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the city of Hopkinsville, Kentucky as follows. Pursuant to KRS one hundred point two eleven, Hopkinsville Code of Ordinances and Community and Development Services recommendation dated May twenty-second, twenty twenty-three, approximately twenty-five point five seven acres of property located on Old Concord Lane, as further described on exhibit A attached here to and incorporated herein is hereby rezoned from I two Heavy Industrial District to R two Multi Family Residential District. If any section, subsection, sentence, clause, or phrase of this ordinance is held unconstitutional or otherwise invalid, such infirmity shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions of this ordinance. All ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance with, are hereby repealed, and this ordinance shall take effect after its passage and publication according to law.
So be it.
Second.
Miss Natasha. And Jay Bell. Mr. Bell, excuse me.
Councilmember Martin.
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcox.
Yes.
Councilmember Meek.
Yes.
Councilmember Lumberger.
Yes.
Councilmember Keel.
Yes.
Councilmember Bell.
Yes.
Councilmember Handy.
Yes.
Councilmember Francis.
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Marsh.
Yes.
Councilmember Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilmember Craig.
Yes.
And that passes unanimously on first reading.
All righty. Item J, twenty-two dash twenty twenty-three, curbside recycling, first reading.
An ordinance amending chapter ninety-three point oh six of the Hopkinsville Code of Ordinances relating to curbside recycling. Whereas, city council recognizes the importance of curbside recycling and wishes to clarify the obligations of the city of Hopkinsville Solid Waste Enterprise relating thereto. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the city of Hopkinsville, Kentucky as follows. Section ninety-three point oh six of the Hopkinsville Code of Ordinances is hereby amended as follows. Ninety-three point oh six, curbside recycling. The city of Hopkinsville hereby establishes a curbside recycling program which shall be governed by the following rules and regulations. Curbside recycling is voluntary and customers must register to receive a recycling container. A monthly fee of five fifty per customer is established and will appear on the same statement as the customer's garbage collection billing statement. In the event the customer does not receive a garbage collection billing statement, the enterprise shall send the curbside recycling statement direct to the customer. Curbside recycling is available for both commercial and residential customers. Collection will occur the same day as the customer's residential garbage and trash collection. Customers are required to comply with ninety-three point oh two B two regarding customer responsibilities. Accepted materials must be placed in the designated containers and set out together with residential containers at the designated collection point no earlier than the day prior to the day of collection by the enterprise. The program is a single-stream program requiring no storing, sorting of, or of accepted items. Accepted items include papers, steel cans, aluminum cans, pasteboard, number one and number two plastics, and cardboard, electronics, batteries, household, and medical hazardous waste. Styrofoam waste, oil, tires, glass, hazardous, and toxic refuse shall not be placed in the recycling container. If any section, subsection, sentence, clause, or phrase of this ordinance is held unconstitutional or otherwise invalid, such infirmity shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions of this ordinance. Any and all ordinances inconsistent with this ordinance are hereby repealed, and this ordinance shall take effect after its passage and publication according to law.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay, I've got Steve and I've got Travis. Any discussion on this?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So currently, there is a resident, the, the way they're billed, I guess, if they, you know, opt into the program. They're billed through HWA.
Correct.
How do we deal with people or businesses who are not customers of HWA?
They.
But not an issue.
That is an issue, and we've talked to them. And part of this is they will be doing direct billing straight to them, the solid waste people will be.
Do we want to include that in this?
That's, that's, that's what this ordinance does, Chuck.
Doug, tell me the language.
That's under ninety-three oh six B. The underlying portion, that's what was added to allow.
The same statement as a.
The last solid waste will bill them.
Yeah, okay, that makes sense now.
No, it was so that we would, because they said it wasn't in ordinance, they didn't have it in ordinance, they didn't have to do it. That's one reason we changed this line in this ordinance, so that it could be handled. In this situation. Any other discussion? Seeing none, we call the roll.
Councilmember Martin.
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcox.
Yes.
Councilmember Meek.
Yes.
Councilmember Lumberger.
Yes.
Councilmember Keel.
Yes.
Councilmember Bell.
Yes.
Councilmember Handy.
Yes.
Councilmember Francis.
Yeah, aye.
Councilmember Smiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Marsh.
Yes.
Councilmember Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilmember Craig.
Yes.
And that passes unanimously on first reading.
All righty, thank you. Need to drink a water before we move on. Okay. All right, municipal orders number eleven, municipal order twenty-eight dash twenty-three, surplus property.
Whereas, the city of Hopkinsville owns certain parcels of real estate which contain no structures and are all vacant lots. And whereas, said real estate is of no value to the city, and the city incurs expense of mowing and maintaining said vacant lots. Now therefore be it ordained, city, Hopkinsville City Council hereby declares the following real estate as surplus. One thousand four East Ninth Street, one fifty-one Mechanic Street, and four twenty-six East Seventh Street. Hopkinsville City Council further authorizes the mayor to dispose of said properties by methods available in KRS eighty-two point oh eight three.
All, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'll make the motion.
No, we gotta make a motion, all right.
I'll make that motion, then we can vote on it.
All right, I got Steve and Travis. All right. Now, let's vote on it again, all those in favor.
Aye.
All right. Usually speak up too quick. Okay, executive order forty-two dash twenty twenty-three, Human Rights Commission.
Effective immediately, Joyce Brooks shall be appointed to the Human Rights Commission to fill the unexpired term of Asherica Price. And there is no action necessary on this one.
Thank you. Executive Order forty-three dash twenty twenty-three, Board of Ethics.
Effective July one, twenty twenty-three, Kristi Madigan shall be reappointed to the Board of Ethics as an alternate member. This term shall expire June thirty, twenty twenty-four.
And I do need a motion. Got Jamie and Travis. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All righty. Executive Order forty-four dash twenty twenty-three, Cable TV Oversight Authority.
Effective immediately, Mark Graham shall be appointed to the Hopkinsville Cable Television Oversight Authority. This term shall expire June thirty, twenty twenty-seven.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Travis. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All righty. Item thirteen, under other, does councilman have any others that they'd like to speak about? Nothing under other, I will go into councilman comments. Mr. Keel.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor.[1555.51]